Mornings. Um, special public hearing for the town of Amherst. Twenty twenty-five budget and the twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty proposed C I P. I'm going to ask everybody to please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. A councilwoman stepped out for a minute, um, but we just let the bit it show that all the board members are here. Um, and I will, um, uh, I'm going to ask, uh, the, the town clerk to just, uh, go through, um, how the, the public hearings work for budgets a little different.
Thank you supervisor. So each speaker will have five minutes. And then at the end of your five minutes, I will ring the bell. And then after that, we're, um, please go back to your seat. And, um, then at the end, the supervisor will answer all questions that were asked. Thank you.
I am opening both public hearings at once. They, and I will go through a presentation on both items. They are two separate public hearings, so we'll first take comments on the C I P. We'll then take comments on the budget. So I'm going to, um, motion to open today's public hearing. Well, that will motion open the public hearing on the twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty C I P. And I'm going to motion open the public hearing on the town of Amherst twenty twenty-five budget. All in favor? All right, um, so this year's budget and C I P, um, start presentation with the budget. Um, for, uh, if you haven't looked, uh, before at the budget, uh, we try to do the, a presentation that shows basically what the, what the dollar values are, um, that are in the budget and what that means across the, the lay of the land for tax. So the budget is increasing this year and the tax levy is increasing. Um, that's the total amount of money we collect in tax. However, um, when we adjust and, and exclude and, and the comptroller's office adjusted all the numbers while we're going through them to, to not take into account the, the, um, the, the assessment or the new revaluation. So basically everything's balanced back to the sixty-two percent, um, val- value. Um, when we look at that, we have had significant growth in the town in property value. And so this year we're returning a tax cut. We are well below the tax cap. Um, this gives you a sense of where funding goes and which of our but, which of our, um, which of our funds sees what kind of money, um, is probably not surprised that Town General Fund, um, in this case followed by sewer and highway are the largest funds. So this year we're returning a one point three two percent tax decrease. That'd be an average of twenty-seven dollars per household. And that decrease, um, so that debt decrease will be in the town tax starting in January. Uh, the, the budget itself, um, looking at where we are, uh, basically, if you look at some of the revenue streams, uh, that, that we count for besides tax, uh, those include sales tax, uh, we are projecting an increase in sales tax, though being a little conservative and didn't project it up as high as we could. Um, we are projecting, uh, decrease again in cable TV franchises. Um, also projecting a decrease in mortgage tax. And, um, the reason for some of that, uh, in terms of mortgage tax has been obviously the, the interest rates have kind of held back some transactions. Uh, we've seen two years of decreased mortgage tax, um, mortgage tax revenues. I'm projecting that again next year. A couple of things that are increasing next year, um, we have, uh, significant, as I said, increase in our assessed value. Um, that is new growth in value. It had the, the value that appears there. Um, five hundred and eighty-two million, eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars in new growth is accounting for the fact that we did a revaluation and that, and again, everything's been equalized back sixty-two percent. So this is apples to apples with budget year twenty-four. Um, looking ahead at some things, again, uh, our, our fund balance, we have a fund balance policy. It's a minimum ten percent. Our fund balances continue to exceed ten percent. Um, although we're not excessive with our fund balance, uh, we do, um, more than appropriately clear our fund balance policy. Um, we see a couple of items that were, that are new, um, uh, that have been positive for the town. Um, the one of those is a five hundred thousand, uh, dollar annual, um, PIF payment from the U B M D, and that's only a portion of the PIF payment that, that seven-one-six health facility is throwing off. Um, that's been a very positive change, um, and has helped to offset some of the decrease that we've seen or shortage that we've seen in mortgage tax. Um, so that was, uh, factors into next year's budget. Um, again, fund balance is close to, to twelve percent, um, over eleven. Um, where we see our, our, our increases, um, again, most of them tend to be in, in personal, personnel and, um, and, and salary and benefits costs, um, continue to increase. Uh, where we see, um, some of our other, um, components, I, I do want to acknowledge that ARPA, which, um, was a factor in some of our sewer finan- funding, um, our sewer lining up to last year is now out. So sewer lining, I'll get to in a minute, comes back over to the capital fund. Um, let's get there. Uh, so again, uh, the, the impact is, uh, negative one point three two percent or about an average of twenty-seven dollars a house. Um, this is the second of three public hearings. The next public hearing is on Monday, uh, October twenty-eighth at, at town hall at seven P M., um, where we will again take comments, uh, related to the budget. I did this at the last meeting, uh, we did a, a work session back in September, but I just want to go back through the town of Amherst debt overview presentation prepared by Linda Yule, our, our director of finance. Um, because I think there's some generally, you know, this is some complicated items, so we want to make sure people understand how things work. So how, um, bands and bonds work, um, bond anticipation notes or bands are short-term financing typically one year. Project can be kept in a band for a maximum of five years without finding with find, without with financing required each year. Sorry. Bonds are long-term financing typically between ten and forty. The maximum term of financing is determined by the period of usefulness. So for buying equipment or building a building or repairing a building, the probable usefulness of that item, um, is determined by bond counsel under New York state law is what governs the, um, what governs the duration of the bond. Once a project is rolled into a bond, the principal and interest payments are set for the term of the bond. Bonds can be refinanced. We do refinance our bonds, um, when we have, uh, appropriate circumstances. Um, once interest rates come down, um, the maximum time period the municipality can finance an object or purpose through debt is known as a period of, of probable usefulness or P P U, which is determined by New York state finance law. Board authorization process, the, the town establishes our C I P. Um, we're doing that now each year, um, that can be amended. When the department is ready to move forward with an approved project, a map plan and report or M R, M P R is submitted to the finance department for review and then the legal department for processing. The legal department coordinates with bond counsel. In our case, it's Harris Beach P L L C, who provides bond resolution and placement on the town board agenda. One of several processes may be followed depending on the project. Projects with a P P U of five years or less become effective immediately upon approval of the bond resolution by a town board. Projects within a special district require a public hearing and be become effective after the public hearing has been closed or upon approval of the bond resolution by a town board. Projects with a P P U over five years, not in a special district, become effective after a thirty-day permissive referendum period, which begins the day the town board approval of the bond resolution. All bond authorizations must be approved by a super majority or two-thirds of the board's voting strength. In our case, four board members in the case of, of our board. So constitutional debt limit is something that, um, we haven't talked about in the past with the, with respect to C I P, but we added it this year. The town has the power to contract indebtedness for any town purpose. Principal amount of debt cannot exceed seven percent of the most recent five-year average of full valuation of taxable real estate of the town. This subject is, this is subject to certain exclusions and, and deductions such as water and certain sewer facilities. The town's constitutional debt limit as of one thirty-one twenty-three was nineteen point zero one percent total. Oh, sorry, what did I say? Twenty-one, one? Oh, sorry, twelve thirty-one twenty-three was nineteen percent. The total debt less exclusions was a hundred and seventy-seven million, eight hundred thirteen thousand, six ninety-one. Our debt limitation was nine hundred and thirty-five million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and two. The estimated constitutional debt limit as of twelve thirty-one twenty-four is seventeen point three percent. The total debt less exclusions, it will, is, is projected to be one seventy-eight, a hundred and seventy-eight million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-four with a debt limitation of one billion, thirty-one million, fifty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven. Um, we do have some opportunities to ask questions if people want to, um, email questions uh, along with any comments on the budget. Um, we will have, we do have, uh, a separate email set up for that and we'll be happy to try to answer them. Um, so I'm going to go through the C I P now. It's a capital, um, a capital improvement plan. The C I P identifies and prioritizes large capital projects, their costs and funding sources. It follows the town's debt management policies, implements the comprehensive plan and public facilities plans. Generally involves physical improvements with project costs in excess of a hundred thousand. It involves new facilities or major repairs. It's not intended to fund routine maintenance. Town board is sole authority for adoption and, and amendments. There is a C I P committee for which the town supervisor is the committee chair. Plan includes the planning board chair, the comptroller, director of finance, the town attorney, town engineer or engineering department designee, the planning director, the director of economic development and the planning department staff to assist the process and organization. The C I P review committee discusses progress on status of previously approved twenty twenty-four C I P projects. Departments submit new requests for program period twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty. The committee reviews and evaluates the new project request on several meetings and formulates a recommended C I P. The supervisor then submits the recommended C I P to town board with the budget. The town board reviews the recommended C I P during a public hearing, including this one today. The town board adopts a C I P with the town operating budget. A summary of, um, so basically it's a six-year program, twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty, that includes sixty-four projects with a total bonding value of about seventy-four million. The amounts proposed to be funded in twenty twenty-five include nineteen, um, million, three hundred and one thousand in long-term bonding, um, with, uh, eleven million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand coming from other sources. Usually those are state and federal grants, um, sometimes they're private contributions, um, or, um, parts of, uh, of an agreement, uh, for a community benefit. Um, some of our projects, uh, our projects run a gamut of, of, um, locations in terms of, uh, where they fit into, uh, our funds, uh, and our facilities. The largest of our, um, twenty twenty-five projected bonding requests is the water pollution control facility. Um, usually occupies a fairly large portion of the request. This year it's at five million, four fifty. Um, paving, transportation and vehicles come after that, recreation and parks, waterline, sanitary sewer. Um, sanitary sewer in this case is the system itself, not the, not the facility, obviously. Um, some of those, uh, just to, to kind of look at it another way, um, W P C F, uh, it through twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, again, that's wastewater, the pollution control facility, um, sanitary sewers and paving and transportation. So this year we do have a couple of projects that I wanted to highlight. Um, first is a question about what is the plan for Central Park? Um, the current plan for Central Park is to use the state grant that we have for playground, accessible playground, the state grant that we have for splash pad, the county grant that we have for a, um, for a winter market, um, combined with what we would expect about a million dollar expenditure from the town, um, to come in using our own forces to repave, uh, golf cart paths for trails and build out, um, redo the parking lot and drainage in the southeast corner, um, of the property itself. Um, that is, that is an intended twenty twenty-five project. Another intended twenty twenty-five project, although this one has no bond actions associated, but it's a large project nonetheless, is the intersection of Maple Road and North Bailey. Um, we are widening the, the intersection using a federal grant that we've been able to obtain in mitigation funds provided by the Costco development. So that project will widen Bailey, um, and, and reorganize Maple as that, um, that project, uh, is set to, to start this year. Other projects that are, um, some of which have, uh, in this case, a major bonding component, not just this year, but next year is the wastewater treatment plant's oxygen separation system. Our sewer treatment plant operates using live bacteria to break down, um, components, um, in the sewer system. Uh, I, that, uh, bacteria requires oxygen. Um, it is very expensive to supply liquid oxygen. Um, we've made liquid oxygen at the plant, um, however, that system is very old now. And so we need to replace that, um, as it's gone offline a couple of times and, and, and bringing in outside liquid oxygen is not sustainable. So it, we've been working on, uh, run up to this project for a couple of years of study. Um, the first, the first project will be to deal with equipment procurement. Takes about a year to build one of these off-site. Um, and then phase two, which will be twenty twenty-six, um, includes the site work and construction at the treatment plant itself. Um, the next project, uh, that I wanted to, to, to point out is the sanitary relining and manhole rehabilitation. Last year, a lot of our funding was shifted, um, or in the past, we've used ARPA funding to increase this. Um, this year we will be using, um, bond authorization and, uh, and mitigation fees paid by development, um, in other areas of town. Um, the, it's a little confusing because north in this case is to your right. Um, but if you're looking at this, this area is, um, basically from, from Bailey West to Niagara Falls Boulevard, uh, it's an area that, um, we've been able to, um, to work on, uh, and focus on with some paving. We've stopped, we've had some I and I work done during a couple of big projects um, by related companies at the Allenhurst, um, and, uh, the Oxford and Princeton apartment complexes. Um, so now we're going to do the, the relining and the manhole rehabilitation there. Um, we continue to do water line improvements this year. There's three large, um, water line improvement areas. Um, the ones we're focusing on in twenty-five are in Pine View Drive, um, uh, Simarand, I can't read, and then Transit Road. Um, the, there is, we, we've been told we have an additional grant, um, for water line work along Alberta. Um, that is not yet in the C I P, um, as it's just come through. So that is the C I P on the budget for this year. Um, with that, I'm going to, uh, open it up for comments and questions. First on the capital improvement plan, and I'm going to ask you to come forward to the podium, um, and state your name and address for record. If you feel that you can't come up to the podium, um, we will bring you a microphone. And again, you have five minutes.
Good morning. Uh, can we get the schematic back up of the, the first one? Right there. Perfect. I had a picture, but we have no way to get this illustrated here. Chris Frangaski, Young's Road. This is part of, I'm concerned with what you're planning to do, whether it's grant money, town money, with this particular piece of property of Westwood. I've been involved with Westwood over twenty years. And it's hard to believe where we are today with it. This board's plan for Westwood failed, in my opinion, for three reasons. The residents didn't want it, the residents didn't need it, and more importantly, the residents were not going to pay for it. When the clubhouse was going to be used as a pre-K facility, this had, could be justified. The fact is, the Williamsville School Board has declined to be a part of the pre-K at the Westwood Country Club. There is, the only thing worse than a bad plan is no plan. I'm working with people in the community who have done development projects, built homes, golf enthusiasts, it's just people with common sense. We have come up with an eight-phase plan for Westwood, the Par Three and Audubon. The first phase is the southeast corner of the Westwood Country Club. We believe that the town should sell this property to a developer to build a senior housing facility. Every day we hear about the housing situation, not only in Amherst, but across the country. The county executive has talked about it, the governor's talking about it. The presidential candidates are talking about it. Mike's a call at the last town board meeting, mentioned every day he's getting phone calls about housing. Now, if this town board can embrace this concept of making this a senior housing facility, we believe up to a hundred units would easily fit in this southeast corner of the property. The town has the opportunity to do something else that will really benefit the community, especially Snyder. I believe if the town board were to embrace this, the first phone call should be made to Eric Raccoon at the Bennerston Development and to consider a land swap for the Snyder Squire Building property for the southeast corner of Westwood and let Bennerston develop with the condition that they will develop a senior housing facility at the southeast corner. Then the town can reach out to a developer working with people like Sam Smith from Snyder and develop a building that fits with scale and size that the community wants. We can even go further by putting pilots on both properties, payment in lieu of taxes. This money from the pilots will then allow for the majority of the payment for the bonding of the redevelopment of Westwood Country Club as a golf course. Now just imagine, we have a senior housing facility here, approximately a hundred units. The golf course has been, has been redeveloped in one of the finest municipal golf courses in the country. Now the clubhouse has a self-sustaining purpose. Golfers from all over Western New York, New York State, Canada will come down to play this golf course. They will utilize the clubhouse. There used to be a tavern in the green restaurant in there. Just imagine again, we have the senior housing facility there. Those people are going to come over and they're going to have lunch. They're going to eat dinner there. It's going to be their community center. You're going to have major collegiate, major amateur tournaments. The clubhouse really will have a self-sustaining purpose. On top of that, we have a company that's managing our golf facility now that has experience in managing large facilities, which this could become. This could be one of the finest, this clubhouse could be one of the finest wedding venues in Western New York. It will be self-sustaining. The future of that clubhouse is very much in question right now. Uh, the costs are going to be enormous. These are the first four phases. We're going to discuss Monday night, phase four through eight, which consists of Westwood, the Par Three and Audubon.
Okay. Thanks, Chris.
All righty, thank you.
So, um, again, we're, we're looking at the C I P for twenty twenty-five to.
Good morning. I'm Karen Howard, um, one ninety-four Roycroft and Snyder. Um, first of all, I love that plan, so I can't wait to hear the rest of it. I just think it makes so much sense. We've been talking about kind of something like that for a while now, and it seems to be falling on deaf ears. And I'm hopeful that given that the prior plans for this property have fallen through, that maybe you guys will open your ears and, you know, consider what the residents might want. Um, but in the meantime, uh, my first question was with respect to the Westwood clubhouse. How much is, um, do you expect it to cost to renovate it and what is your intended use? My second question is regarding Royal Park. Um, when will that be complete? What's the ongoing maintenance cost and how will it be funded in the budget? And my third question is relating to bonding. Um, so I think I, I heard you say that we'll be adding nineteen million dollars to our debt um, in this budget, um, cycle with no, um, debt repayments. And I just wanted to clarify if that's correct. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to answer all the questions at the end, but I, we are adding nineteen million. But if you, if just, I want to clarify this one first. Where the, the plan is, is not to just add without debt repayment. So we are anticipating a million or about, um, we're anticipating going from one, a hundred and seventy-seven million, eight hundred thirteen to a hundred and seventy-eight, three hundred and eighty-nine. So it's nineteen million, but there is repayment. Okay. Okay, uh, further comments or questions on the C I P?
Joe Boytovich, thirty-five B Cyrus. One of the, um, important points that comes up here, I think, is not just taking a look at the current C I P project, but going backwards on it, comparing with previous years and seeing what's changed on here. Uh, one of the, the big issues going back with twenty twenty-four, uh, first one is twenty twenty-four one, uh, had in there a forty-two million dollar sewer project. Uh, project is coming up for renovation in the, uh, for the Boulevard Mall area. That included a thirty-one million dollar grant from the state on this. Uh, the town promoted this last year at Christmas time. It was all over the news, all over the media, holding up a. all over the media, holding up a big $31 million check. I took a look at the minutes of the town board meeting then, and the articles included on there were not for reception of the money directly. It was for an application for the grant from the ESD. It stated in there that proposed acceptance by the Board of Directors would be in March of that year. Later on, I called the ESD Department up locally, and they said that would be the projected time period. It could be pushed later on. I kept checking on here, tried calling the local ESD Department back. They refused to answer my calls and returned my messages. I checked on the, the State Board of Directors. I saw nowhere on there where the $42 million project was brought up at all. Finally, in August of this year, I put a formal request in for ESD. I got a response back in one week, and I was surprised at the rapid response on that. The response was, they had no documents pertaining to this project. I called up directly on there, and they said they couldn't answer any further questions because they specifically had no documents on acceptance of the project. Now, my question is, what happened to that money? It was all promoted that we already had the check in hand. And for this last year, they had, we had put in a $21 million bond to fund some of that project. Now, did that bond go through already? If it hasn't, or if it has, what's going on with the money? Because I don't see anything in the 2025 project or year, CIP, for any sewer work of that magnitude. It, it comes up because I saw a new project on Dodge Road in my neighborhood for another 200-unit apartment complex attaching into the lines supposedly in the area that is currently overflowing with capacity. So we need some clearance on that clarification. I also noticed that all the funding for the Boulevard Mall renovation project has disappeared from the CIP also. They had 26 and 27, I believe, on there for demolition and for some infrastructure project on there. That's gone from the CIPs also. So I'd like some clarification on what's coming up and why those things disappeared. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, and I can answer all those at the end. Are there any other comments or questions on the CIP?
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Thomas Frank, and I'd like to comment on the Amherst Central Park, the focus area number one for the CIP 2025 projects. That the, the Elica Creek is the lifeblood of the village of Williamsville and the town of Amherst. And that the Amherst Central Park Greenway should interconnect the parks like Supervisor Susan Graylick's Elica Creek Trailway. And also to connect the Glen Park to the Amherst State Park. And that, this is what they've done on the Hudson River, the Erie Canal, the Genesee River, and the Niagara River Greenway. That, you have, the Glen Park Joint Board should be the lead agency for the Amherst Central Park Greenway. And two of the major issues in there as far as the funding, over like a five-year period, with a life expectancy that extends through 2050, has to do with the connection of Elica Creek to the Niagara River Greenway, the relicensing of the Niagara Power Project and the $450 million that they gave to Erie and Niagara Counties to mitigate the cumulative negative impact on the infrastructure, like the water lines, the sewer lines, and the highway storm sewers that that has. And the other connection of Elica Creek is that its connection to Tonawanda Creek and the Erie Canal National Heritage Corridor. And you're talking about New York State Parks and Trails and Historic Preservation as far as the connection of the village to the bicentennial of the Erie Canal. For the, as far as the Amherst Central Park Greenway, should be an interconnected system. Thank you.
Anybody else on the CIP?
Dennis Hoben, 216 California Drive, regarding the, this Westwood Country Club project. I, I think that Chris Dungrowski has, has a good idea. Returning it to a golf course makes a lot of sense to me. It already was a golf course. I think you folks remember that. The only thing is, he mentioned Bennerston and that the project that he's got going on in Snyder on Main Street. I, I think it's better if we, if we have these developers follow the law. If there's not enough space and they're going to overbuild. I believe actually right now Bennerston's in the process of working with the Planning Department of the town of Amherst, and he's reworking his, his project there to make it a little more, a little smaller and, you know, conform to the, the area that he has there. So I, I think developers should do that. I don't think we should, we should sell off part of this parcel. I like the idea of the senior housing, but that would have to be worked out. I just don't, you know, we're, we're kind of, I hate to use the word stuck with this $8 million parking lot right now that, that this board went out and bought, purchased. Maybe they should have thought it out a little bit better and came up with a plan, a viable plan before they went out and spent $8 million of our tax money. But we have it, and, you know, perhaps making it into a golf course and keeping it a Central Park wouldn't be such a bad idea. There's a lot of options there. I've actually visited this site with Mike Zuccala, and I took some pictures of the clubhouse, and it's, you know, it's falling into disrepair. I do construction work, I'm sure it could be renovated, I'm sure it could be renovated. It's going to cost some money, obviously, but if you wait too long, you know, it'll go beyond, beyond what you can fix it up to be. I've, I've gone there maybe 10 years ago for different functions. Last time, I think I was there for breakfast, and it was quite elegant. And it would be great to bring that clubhouse back to what it was. I think unfortunately, the board kind of dropped the ball on what they wanted to do. As someone stated earlier, the people didn't want it, and we didn't want to pay for it. So maybe if they come up with a plan to return it to a golf course, I, I applaud Chris's idea. I think that's a good idea. It's kind of a no-brainer. That would probably be the least expensive option, would be to return it to a golf course. We still need to find out from the DEC what's in the ground over there. I keep hearing all these conflicted reports. If there's a report in, I'd love to hear about that today, about the, any pollution or toxins that are in the ground over there. I, I think this is, this is an, an opportunity that is more or less thrust upon us that we could have a Central Park. And maybe it would work out if it was planned out the right way. So thank you for your time.
CIP. Okay, CIP.
Good evening, town, good evening, town board members. My name is Don Smith, Northwell. I think one of the first things that gets lost in what the CIP is, is basically a planning document. It's not a commitment to spending. It's a long-term planning document that somehow, from year to year, especially in the recently, has been widely changed in certain areas that we don't really understand why it's that way. Now, we've heard points, well, your presentations here are given more like an accountant, not like somebody who's our representative. That's what I'm trying to figure out. The idea is to inform us as to why decisions you make in the CIP were made and why it benefits us. We're here at the Amherst Senior Center, where most people here are on fixed incomes. How does your plans affect our lives? We want to know. Tell us. You haven't made a statement at all about that. How are the, how are the plans you're making affecting the long-term plans of our children and grandchildren? We hear nothing about that. What's the balance between long-term debt and short-term operating expenses? Why are we moving toward more long-term debt if we, if we can't, if it increases our short-term needs for repayment? If we take out loans, just like your mortgage, you have to pay it back on a yearly basis. So therefore, we have, we're increasing our short-term operating expenses by taking out more long-term debt. There's nothing wrong in taking out long-term debt as far as things we need and things that are, we're going to have to have, for instance, the Water Pollution Control Facility, which for all intents and purposes is a place that's going to be taking a lot of our money for a lot of time. Okay, so we need to know that. We need to know what's going on. We don't need to know from a point of view, this amount, this amount of money went here, this amount of money went there. What, this is the numbers, here are the numbers. It's not that. How does it affect our lives? How, how are we as a town going to develop over time? How is it going to encumber, for instance, your replacements in the next board? You know, for instance, these projects go on for multiple years. They're just plans. And frankly, tell you the truth, as Joe Votrovich said, what happened to that X, that project, $42 million? Well, it'd be nice to know in some way that's for us to understand why you made the changes you made to your plans. And frankly, you, you seem to be making lots of plans and lots of changes. There was a, there was a Councilmember, Lavin, passed a, a, with your, with the board, proposed a plan for openness for, for the government of the budgetary process, where there were some sort of workshops being done for this. That's been said, that's, that was put into a local law. We haven't had it. As I said before, when you pass a local law, the only person responsible for, for enforcing the local law is yourselves. If you don't enforce it, what are we to believe? This is called being honest with the public, telling them what's going on. And if it's not, if it isn't something that makes you look good, you take, you take the hits. Because it's frankly, sometimes you're not perfect. You make mistakes. If you, if you, if you own up to your mistakes and say we're going to correct them, that goes a long way to increasing trust. But you can't say, I didn't make that mistake. It's not going to work. We, the, the CIP budget is different from the operating budget. The CIP budget is a long-term plan to take out money for multiple years, and that is a big deal. So if you're saying, I'm going to take out $5 million for the Water Pollution Control Facility for '25, I'm going to take out $5 for '26, I'm going to take out $2 for '27, I'm going to take out $3 for '28, or whatever the number is, that's a big commitment of a long-term amount of debt for the, for the community. We need to know why it's important to us to know why we're doing that. It's really one of the most misunderstood parts of the budget is the CIP. No, it's, it's the, it's the long-term debt. It's, it has to do with items which have a long-term, as you pointed out, long-term viability. And bands and bonds are very important. We should know, really know what a band and a bond is. Right now, people don't, I don't think there's anybody here that understands too much of the difference between the two of them. You throw those around, and basically we lose it. Was that five minutes?
Yes. Jonathan Rich, Smith Road. Just a simple point of clarification. I know that the state changed some of the requirements with regards to bonding of sewers this year. I just want to know if that's reflected in the difference between the '23 and '24 budgets. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, I'm going to answer questions on the CIP, and then we'll move over to, to the budget. So first, the, the, yes, the requirements on the sewer funding or sewer bonds, sewer borrowing is, is included in the CIP and in how we're approaching the budget and the, the bond actions. But again, all that flows through our bond council. They tell us what, how we can and cannot stage borrowing. I'm going to go out of order because I, my notes are out of order, so I'm going to start with Tom. Yes, Tom, the ultimately, as part of our LWRP, we do look at the connectivity of Greenway along Elica Creek. I think that's important. I think that's part of why this former Westwood, current Amherst Central Park site is important. And we do need to continue to look for funding opportunities for that. Dennis, I agree, there could be an opportunity for some golf. I think there's a balance. I do not necessarily see senior housing, Chris, but it's something that, you know, as we look at options here, we could look at a lot of options. The, the, again, this is something that, well, it is something that was a long time ago in the Hamster Plans, and though that was not well-received in the community, but it's something to think about. I do, there are DEC reports on our website, or at least they're supposed to be. So I will check with the Clerk's Office to make sure that those get published. We do have, we do have to do something to bring the clubhouse back, although I might think that should be part of an RFP, to look for somebody to do that who would have an interest in operating it privately. But, you know, the, the clubhouse is an asset. And similar to you with the construction experience, I also agree. It could certainly, it's certainly not gone. We've stopped roof leaks. It's maintained, we've maintained heat in the facility, so, so that is salvageable. Regarding the sewer project, so the sewer project, the West Side Interceptor project is not in this year's CIP because it was fully funded and activated last year. We are receiving $31 million from the state through ESD. We are currently in DEC approvals. New York State DEC has to approve the entire system. We're anticipating a spring 2025 build. The money that we borrowed last year started the Bailey portion of the project that is under construction. And we only have borrowed as much as we've needed to do. So even though we authorize a bond, it doesn't mean we actually borrow the entire authorization. We borrow the portions needed to do construction. The Bailey portion of the project is on budget and is in construction now. The rest of the project should start in spring of '25. Regarding the Boulevard Mall, I've said this before, and Joe, you haven't been at a couple meetings, so you, you haven't heard me say it, but the current plan for the Boulevard Mall, working with the development community, does not involve any town funding for demolition or for, for acquisition. So we've been able to remove that from our CIP entirely. It is, all the funding's born out of the private sector. And that is a project that we're still moving forward with. Chris, we'll look forward to hearing the rest of your presentation in our next CIP meeting on Monday. There's a lot to think about there. Karen, regarding the Royal Park piece, Royal Park was a CIP component two years ago. We are currently working on negotiating, negotiating a management agreement with Damon, and we are looking at naming rights to support operations. And then Don, relating to your comments. I apologize if I give this presentation as an accountant. I give the presentation on budget and CIP every year, presenting a long series of numbers in a very complicated budget and CIP that we've been working on for months. And the accountants in the room will probably, probably tell you I don't sound anything like an accountant normally. So regarding- So regarding the, regarding the, the presentation itself, you know, this is, this is how I've chosen to present the budget. I think that the, it's a, it's a very complicated setup. As you, as you noted, the, the CIP is a plan. It does change annually. It reflects what's happening in the town and as projects change, so does the CIP. There are pieces that become more static. Last year, two years ago, the cryogenic or the oxygen system would not have shown up. It's something that we've had to work on, trying to figure out what is happening with our oxygen at that facility. And as we've come to understand it, the system's antiquated and it needs to be replaced. So the system, so that changes and that comes onto the CIP. And as systems like that come onto the CIP, they're large expenses. So we pull other components off of the CIP and we shift our priorities. Regarding the shift to, to loan, it's actually, we actually, or the shift, shifting operations to loan or routine maintenance to loan, it's actually the opposite. Over the past few years, we've pulled minor vehicle purchases or recurring vehicle purchases, recurring maintenance expenses off of the CIP and have added them back to budget. And that's created an increase in, in the budget, but it's decreased those in the CIP so that we could stop taking out long-term debt on routine purchases or replacements. And that, that's reflected in a number of different departments, highway, building, rec, facilities this year, and, why am I forgetting? Engineering, both the treatment plant and, and sewer, and then police. When police vehicles, the town board used to bond those annually. Those, last year, we pulled those into the budget because we replaced police vehicles annually. So that's this year's CIP. We're going to switch over now and ask for comments and questions on this year's budget. So again, invite you to come up. Please state your name and address for the record as you do.
Jane Cox, Harlem Road. At the last budget meeting and today, you mentioned the average tax impact would be a decrease of twenty-seven dollars per three-hundred-forty-seven-thousand-dollar average property assessment. So today I want to talk about special districts budget. And my questions are, was that decreased figure for the general town tax only? Did it include the highway and the central alarm tax figures? Did it include the special district taxes? Because on the tax bills, all of these are indicated as separate lines on your property tax bill. The special district taxes include the sewer taxes, the drainage, the water, and the sidewalk snow clearing taxes. And they are all taxed on the full amount of the assessments for your property without any exemptions like a veteran's exemption or probably the senior exemption. I'm not sure about that. The special districts document shows that the special districts taxes, the tax rate was going to increase four-point-five-one percent. But it does not indicate in this document what the dollar amount of the impact on an average property assessment would be. Many of us in some of the older areas of town have had very significant property and assessment increases. And the special district taxes are billed at the full rate of assessment without those exemptions. So I would like to know the dollar amount, and I know the taxes are all different for different people, but on an average assessment, what is the dollar amount increase for those taxes? Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm just going to, because that one is a question that I think could impact other questions. We use, when we use that, that negative one-point-three-two, that is a blended average that includes all the special districts. It's, so we look for an average house that pays most of the district fees, and that's where that number comes from. It includes the, the special districts, it also includes the general fund. So that's cumulative. Hopefully that answers your question. Further questions and comments on this year's budget?
Joe Votovitch, thirty-five B Cyrus. On the issue of the Department of Economic Development, that department was created four years ago. And one of the requirements put in the town law that created that was that they publish yearly reports. So far, there's only been one yearly report that's been shown online. And that was not written by the department itself. It was hired by an outside consultant to do that with eighty-three thousand dollars that they had pulled into the capital improvements budget. Now, that doesn't apply for that. I don't know how they got the money on, who transferred the money over. I had to go through the controller's office to find out where the money came from. I'd like to know why nobody's critiquing this and making sure that they're doing the job they're supposed to be doing. Next one is on the Department of Emergency Services. I sent a communications letter on to that a couple of months ago. I did a survey of five other towns in the area, and they all averaged about fifty thousand dollars spent on emergency services, whereas the town spends, last year was four-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars on that. I can't believe that nobody in the town has critiqued that and found out why we're spending so much money there. Yes, they did cut back on the budget this year, but it was mainly because the long-term director had retired. The new person hired is now paid a lower salary. I was told that they had to have full-time staff on there for filling out all the FEMA reports. There's only been one FEMA report done in six years. That was in twenty-twenty-two. I foiled a copy of that report. Most of that was on curb damage to the roadway. Now, how do you relate that to the storm itself? I don't know if you can. Could have been curb damage that was there beforehand. Now, according to FEMA reimbursement policies, you cannot get reimbursed for plowing, snow plowing, unless it's after, seventy-two hours after the storm. Town got all the plowing done within three days, so they got no reimbursement for plowing. So it's all just residual curb damage, four feet here, three feet there. Spending this money for that time period, for this type of report, I don't see that as being necessary or wasting more money. Another general issue I have on the budget is I don't see anybody picking up, taking over and critiquing smaller issues, digging into things. I worked as an engineer where part of my job was to find issues that I see might be important, digging into, finding out why they were doing certain things. Unless you do that, you don't find out issues like this. Now, I did talk to the, the financial auditor that the town uses, and I asked about a couple of certain small issues. And he told me that they can't do something like that. That would be a forensic audit costing hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they don't do that with the budget. So what happens? All these small issues like that filter right through, budget goes up and nobody catches them. I think the town should start focusing on these small issues so we can improve the budget. Thank you.
Any further comments on the budget?
My question is, is fairly simple. Money not spent in twenty-twenty-four, would that carry over into this budget? Money that wasn't spent in twenty-twenty-four, that would carry on, you know, it would make sense, seem logical that that would not carry over into the twenty-twenty-five, or it would be subtracted. For instance, there was eleven million dollars that wasn't borrowed for the Musical Fair Theater. And there was also money that was probably budgeted for, to move the, the museum to the, to the Westwood Country Club, and that wasn't borrowed. And I'm wondering if there was other money that was borrowed or thought to be borrowed in that budget that would affect this budget. Maybe you can show us, or maybe you can just tell us that, what, what effect that had on the twenty-twenty-five budget. Just those two projects alone would be over twenty million dollars, I think. Also, I guess that's about it. Thank you.
Anything further on the budget?
Chris Strangaski, Young Road. Dennis brings up a good point there. You know, we had bonded, or I guess my question is, when you, after the CIP is completed, when does the, does the town just bond all this money in October, November? Or does it get bonded over the course of the year? So for an example, like Boulevard Mall, which was seventeen million dollars for infrastructure and removal of that facility, that money wasn't, is not going to be spent. Was it ever bonded? No, so it wasn't, this Marinucci told me it's not bonded. So that money is just, it's just a guide, and then the town doesn't bond it. It doesn't move forward into the budget. That's, yeah, maybe you can explain.
I'll answer, I'll answer your question and Dennis's question. So when we pass the CIP, it's, it's a plan. And it says, here's, here's planned work that we, we think we're going to do this year and next year. The town board goes to a bond resolution to authorize a bond, right? And if we authorize the bond, that means we are able to bond. Now, in the case of Musical Fair, we withdrew the bond authorization after the petition was filed. And we never reauthorized. In the case of like BNHV, BNHV wasn't really in this year's, last year's CIP, but it was never money borrowed, none of, so like the, the Boulevard Mall that had infrastructure funding associated with the CIP, it's just there in plan. It's never money that we actually borrowed. In fact, even when we borrow, right, so if we borrow, if we authorize a bond, so on the, on the Bailey Sewer Project, the way it works is we authorize the bond, and you authorize a bond in excess of your budget to make sure that you don't go over your bond authorization. Then you go out to bid, you bid the work, you get a final number, and that's how much you borrow. You don't borrow the full breadth of the authorization. And we borrow, we go out to bond sale, we sell, we, we sell bonds in September, October, and at the end of the year is when we, we sell basic bonds and bands. So we'll, we pretty much know where the projects are running. We try not to borrow the full breadth if we can avoid it. And then sometimes even after you borrow, you do a project and you get through the project and there's still money left, right? In the, in the borrowing. That money usually goes to debt reserve, which basically gets used to make payments against the rest of the, the debt that you hold. So, so there was no like eleven million dollar carve-out in a budget last year, so that's not. But that said, we did perform well against our budget in twenty-four. And there is money that we anticipate bringing back to fund balance in twenty-five. And we do use some of that money to offset. Mind you, we have a ten, ten percent fund balance policy. So we don't allocate past ten percent. We hold ten percent. If you look at credit rating, companies would like us to hold even more. We have a large budget, it's kind of hard to justify holding a lot of fund balance when it's just money that would be accumulating. So there's, there's a, there's a balance you have to make a decision about. But our ten percent fund balance policy sets the floors to, or the, the ceiling as to how much will roll into the next budget. There were, there were a couple of other questions. And Jane, I, I answered the blended average question, but I didn't answer the question about exemptions. That's a blended average without exemptions. So if there's exemptions, it would be further. There was a gentleman who came up and asked us, told us that he saw this huge increase of like a thousand-dollar property tax from the town last year. At one of our meetings, and when we looked into it, it turns out they had an exemption come off. So something I want to remind everybody is, we're heading into January. If you have veterans or senior exemptions, you really need to make sure that your exemptions are in place for the calendar year. Because once you get that tax bill, you know, you've got to, you've got to have your exemptions. So if you, if you, if you use exemptions, and you're entitled to exemptions, you should talk to our assessor's office. And that's just, that's something I just want to make sure we continue to get out there.
Don Smith, North Long. A few simple questions. People should, I think should understand that percentage increase is a delta over last year. Okay, so if you say you have a cumulative total tax increase this year of one-point-nine-nine percent, that's delta, which means it's the, it's the difference between last year and this year. So as moving forward, when you have multiple deltas over, say, a four- or five-year period, they become additive. So for the two years, twenty-four and twenty-three, we have an additive increase of approximately thirteen-point-four percent, which is we're currently paying. In other words, the old value gets baked into the, to the new, new budget, the last delta. So we're moving ahead in deltas. We're not talking absolute values, just talking changes to budget over year over year. The, the, the other thing that's understand, I think for people, is that when you're talking about the budget, you're talking about the operating budget, which means what it costs to run the town on a yearly basis. Essentially, your cost of your, biggest single cost, I think, is your, is your wages and, and benefits package. I think that's the largest part, probably like sixty or seventy percent, something like that. I don't know what the number is percentage-wise. And that's a large amount of money for a lot of people doing a lot of work. That's how we do it. Then there's, it's not for capital. Capital is CIP. That's things that have multi-year usage. We're only talking about things that get expended in the, in the current fiscal year, whatever. Fiscal year, I think, is your, is the chronological year, as far as I understand it. Okay? So, so I'm just trying to keep it clear for people to understand, we're only talking about what we're going to be spending this year for all the things we need to do that gets expended in this year. Versus even, even payment on debt is payment for this year. Okay, that's nothing to do with the capital. So people should understand that we now are paying a cumulative amount over two years of somewhere's over thirteen percent since, since two years ago. That's a lot of money for a lot of people, especially for those of us who are on fixed incomes. And I'm trying to figure out what your policy or attitude is toward balancing the needs of both those people on fixed incomes versus those of both those people on fixed incomes versus those people who are not on fixed incomes. One thing I've noticed that in the, in certain budgets, especially the capital budgets, at least in my personal opinion, that a lot of money has been put into the youth and recreation portion of the budget. As opposed to the other parts of the budget. That was a big focus. Now, I can understand why that was. Because in the previous, previously, that was one of the areas that was overly admitted in a lot of ways. It was, it was under-invested in in previous years. I know that. I was here when they did that. I also know that the youth and recreation department and the seniors, senior uh service department were combined due to a single department. Is that a benefit or a liability or what is it to the needs of the senior community as opposed to the, I have interest in both youth and rec and in the senior area. So how are we benefiting both communities? Okay, in other words, we're talking, when we spend money, the whole idea is we're, we're, we're asking for benefits to the, for the, to the town. Keeping the town in good shape means keeps property values in good shape. Keeping the town in good shape means it's keeping the schools in good shape. Keeping the town in good shape means that we can have business in good shape. The whole idea for spending money is that you get benefits. Now, I want to know how we're, we're communicating that benefits to the people who are spending the money. Because at this point in time, I don't see the process as being overly informative in terms of filling in the needs for people to understand why they're spending the money they're spending. It's important to us to understand that. Thank you very much for listening.
Hey, there. Further comments or questions on the budget? I'm gonna ask our board if they want to make any comments or have any questions. Sure, Councilman.
Yes, just three points. I'm very interested Monday in what we're gonna hear about potential se- senior housing. I do get a great many calls on that. And I'm very interested to hear what a solution might be. So I'm looking forward to that. Uh, I know Joe's comment that the idea that you don't necessarily see what we bring up during budget discussions, but we do. For example, I can say, I had a short conversation with Brian and Daryl about the reserves we have set aside for potential future union contracts. I was a little concerned about that. After I had that conversation, I'm less concerned. You don't see those conversations, but that, but because you don't see them, it doesn't mean they don't happen. That's the point I make. And the third is, yes, Dennis and I did have a chance to walk through the property at uh Westwood. But what Dennis and I did not know, and I will caution everyone here to remember, is the building and the property is alarmed. And we tripped the silent alarm when we did that. And as a result, I would encourage people not to wander the property.
Any further comments? All right, I'm going to motion to close today's public hearings on the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-thirty CIP and the twenty-twenty-five budget. All in favor? Before we adjourn?
I just want to quickly remind everybody that tomorrow is the last day to register to vote in New York State. It must be um hand-delivered. It cannot be postmarked by tomorrow. We live in a representative democracy and the only way that you have a state is by voting. Um, tomorrow also begins our early voting, so please make sure your addresses for where you vote are up to date, that you are registered to vote and that those you know, love and live near are also registered to vote as we head into a very important election, as every election is very important. So thank you. Thank you for the time, supervisor.
Okay, uh, with that, I'm gonna motion to adjourn. All in favor?